I'd like to call to order the November 16th, 2023 Myhbersburg City School Board Meeting. If I could please rise for the pledge.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I've been doing this 16 years now, and every time that I get down with anyone, I say amen. Okay, next, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Mrs. Gettler?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Dovevine?
Here.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
Mr. Homan?
Here. The district's mission is to foster a positive and nurturing and safe environment to inspire and to support ongoing learning and the development of individuals as productive members of society. We must be able to conduct our meetings in an orderly fashion. Our expectation at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. In the event anyone is disruptive and interferes with the meeting, they will be asked to leave. They refuse to leave, we will request that the law enforcement assist in the process. Each person addressing the school board needs to give his or her name and address. Each person is allocated three minutes. I'm a little bit ahead of time here, but I'm going to go ahead and get it over with now. Each person is allotted three minutes to speak until the total time of 30 minutes is used. We will give a 30-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or the district employees. As a reminder, our expectation at all board meetings is that everyone conducts themselves in a civil manner, respectfully. We will not tolerate any profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements at all. And that would be from the time we start our meeting until the end of it, please. Okay? May I have a roll call, please?
No, no, we've got to move through the consent items. We're on item C.
Where are we at? Okay. Okay. Next, may I have an adoption of the agenda, please? Approval of the adoption of the agenda for November 16th, 2023. Item D, approval of the amendments. Approval of the amendments for the regular board meeting held on October 26th of 2023. Item E is the approval of the financial report dated October 31st, 2023. Do you want to speak to that?
I'll talk a little more when I give the forecast presentation, but these monthly reports, remember, they are currently looking back to comparing to the May submitted forecast. So what we'll see is after the submission of the November forecast, these monthly reports will look more in line with what you might expect to see.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn the next one over to Mr. Amsler.
Oh, all right. Ms. Kay? How are you? Good. Our Myhbersburg October Student of the Month is Myhersburg Middle School student Ms. Kay Mastrinardi. And before I get started, Kay, I will tell you that I talked to Leah, and she sends her regards and congratulations. She said it could not have went to a better person, so. Ms. Kay was nominated by Myhersburg Middle School team teachers and counselor Monique Hobbs. They said, "Myhersburg Middle School is proud to nominate Kay Mastrinardi as October Building Student of the Month. She exemplifies our PBIS values of respect, responsibility, and safety. As an eighth grader, Kay has already had to learn the importance of time management, discipline, and focus in reaching her goals. This remarkable young lady strives for excellence in everything she does where it involves schoolwork, sports, relationships, or other extracurricular activities. Learning is the priority for Kay while she is at school, and her grades reflect this commitment. She values her friendships, yet realizes she needs to stay focused during lessons and get her work done completed while at school. She gives her time to dedicate to other commitments beyond the school day. Kay has many interests and pours herself into all of them. She is involved with our building fellowship of Christian athletes and participates weekly. She and other student leaders share the responsibility of presenting topics and fostering fellowship. As the secretary of the student council, Kay supports her peers, teachers, and building events. Recently, she helped during conference night as a student guide for parents during or going to classrooms. Kay also enjoys her involvement in sports. She is an active in gymnastics, swim-dive team, and track. She is a disciplined athlete and enjoys challenging herself. In spite of her many interests and commitments, Kay still has responsibilities at home. She is responsible for helping out with chores and keeping her room clean. Kay consistently shows respect, empathy, and consideration towards peers and adults. She will readily help a student who may be struggling with a concept in class or lend a compassionate ear to a classmate who is having a rough day. She feels that showing kindness and respect to everyone is the best way to be. Her teacher describes her as positive, prepared, hardworking, and helpful to students and staff. Kay has high standards for herself and has aspirations of becoming a nurse or a marine biologist. We have no doubt this ambitious eighth grader will reach her goals. Congratulations."
Did Shawn Myers pay you a visit as well and get your silver dollar? Excellent. So tell us what your favorite gymnastics apparatus exercises is?
Well, as a favorite, I like a roll. But if I had to choose a favorite, it would probably be bars.
Like the fly, huh?
Yeah.
We're not smoking quite, but that's serious.
I like doing rush up for swim and really all the open arms.
This is my favorite part. What do you run in traffic field?
Um, curls. I pulled it last year, and this year I'm planning on long jumping and high jumping.
I'm hoping with the pole bombs. We've had some experience. We don't do so much.
Mr. Osborne or Mr. Shaitz signed that up for us every year at the home meet, so.
I was going to ask you, so what are you most looking forward to for high school? Well, I'll check back. Oh, you did? What did you think of that? Did you see the kittens and the bunnies?
Yes.
Wasn't that cool?
Yeah.
That's a cool place, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Kay.
Congratulations. I'm supposed to hold the microphone when I leave my area. Maybe I should send him an apology letter. Dale, do you have the microphone? I don't think you have to get up anymore, do you? Dan, oh, he's got a microphone there, so he's good.
Got one?
Yeah.
Is that, is that one's not working?
I didn't turn it on. Oh, that one there.
There's not a computer hookup over here.
Okay, next we'll go to item G, and that is, well, you have a presentation from Dan Shaw.
So giving a little introduction to Dan Shaw. As you know, we've been working on our five-year capital improvement plan out of our PI funds that we have. And so I know throughout the year, Capitol Conference, we've talked about, we have two sets of PI money that are continuous, and PIs for permanent improvement money. And so one was passed in 91 and one was passed in 93. And in the business department, I oversee the money that's in the 91 account, which is really your facilities, your roofs, your buses, all those types of things. Your other PI account, and Dan, I'll show you this tonight, is 93, and the 93 money is used for curriculum, technology, items like that. And so, as you know, as part of our strategic plan, really mapping out the five-year plan as we look at our buildings, those facilities, we look at the parking lots, we look at transportation buses, all those things go into this plan. And so we spent a lot of time the last several months looking the best way, the best strategies to use the funds that we have available. And so Dan is going to present tonight what we have preliminary have and be able to answer some questions as we go through, so.
Thanks, Steve.
Can we get a screen?
Did it disappear?
Did it go off?
It was on there for just a second. On just a second ago? Yeah.
And I've copies, I almost forgot to hand out.
Here, I'll hand them out.
Okay. The screens were on, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I saw this Ricky. They're still on.
Thank you.
Okay, unplugged and plugged in.
You can turn them off and turn it back on again, maybe.
I just turned it back on and off, I don't know.
Hmm. Steve, can you load the pair of those? Yeah, that's fine. Well, thanks for having me this evening. Justin said I shouldn't take more than an hour and a half, so. Just kidding. So the hard copies that you have in front of you are not the entirety of the spreadsheet, but there are a couple of the more important pieces of it that I'm going to reference. And as Steve was explaining, we've gone through, this is something that we do with the district or have done with the district for about a year and a half now, and we're finalizing and doing some major renovations to it or updates to the plan itself. And so what I don't want you to do is walk away and feel like the cash balances that you see there are done and in any kind of stone, yet they're not. This is a draft. We are still working through some pieces, in particularly around HVAC and some of your transportation, you know, bus circulation issues. So we're looking at those pieces still to hit targeted cash and make this a more sustainable plan, because if you were to look at it right now, across the top of that first page, you'll see 2022, 2023, 2024. That's the end of each one of those fiscal years. So you're looking at June 30th, for example, 2024, and that would be the end of this fiscal year. 2023 was the one we just got done, and so we're looking at what are the expenses that we expect to have inside of this fiscal year, broken down by facilities, transportation, business, and other, inside of that 90-91. Are you with me on that sheet? So when you look at then the cash balance, assuming we spend those items or we make those expenditures, those capital outlay expenditures, the cash balance, you can see dips to negative in 2028 and 2029. And so some of the things that we have identified as projects are pushing that balance to be negative out there. And we've got to identify those, the projects that will allow us to keep that a positive balance. So we have to keep reworking numbers and working with the appropriate contractors to make sure that capital spend is in line with the resources that you have. Once we have everything in there and it's balanced out and tied out to where we know the district's going to be okay with their capital needs, even looking forward five, six, seven years, then we'll come back to you with that completed plan. Eventually, you know, these things, the capital expenditures catch up with you, or there's other, there's new pieces or components that you want to do from a capital expenditure standpoint down the road. This plan will help you make sure you're maximizing the use of dollars and getting the most efficiency that you can out of the dollars you have for capital needs. Okay, so just a little bit more on the methodology, but please don't hesitate to ask any questions if you have them. You'll see green tabs if you look at the screens up in the corners. I guess you don't have those screens in front of you, but you do have a couple of these example sheets. So one of the sheets that you can see that you have in front of you, it's called Facilities. And it says Capital Plan-Facilities at the top, and it has the same methodology across the top of the box or the fiscal years. And down the side is a description of each one of the projects that are part of the facilities piece of this capital plan. So HVAC isn't listed all the way out, but it's in the attached sheet behind it. It shows you kind of the projects that we're looking for, or looking at doing inside of HVAC in each one of those fiscal years. Now, those projects are, again, draft, right? We're still working on which ones get done where and how do we balance out those numbers? In addition to that, then, you've got asphalt, concrete, and flooring. We've got roofing needs, the entire envelope for the buildings. So from a facility standpoint, we're looking at what's that next 10 years look like for making sure that we're keeping up with the assets that the taxpayers have invested in. So we're planning out, making sure that we use the dollars as best we can to keep those assets where they should be. Similarly, we're doing the same thing for transportation. We're doing the same thing for technology, curriculum, safety, and security. All those pieces are part of this plan. I didn't hand out the whole workbook to you because it would be pretty significant, right? But I wanted to give you a couple different sheets so you could see what is getting built into the model behind the scenes. So if you were to look at that summary sheet again, you would see the facilities piece on there, and then next, after facilities, transportation, then business, then other. So it all worked, the facility sheet, the detail sheet that you have totals, and that total comes to the summary sheet. So you have a quick snapshot on everything inside the business area, the 90-91. From a facilities, transportation, business, and other standpoint, you can see what the totals are that we expect to spend over 10 years.
And so the last several years, as you know, we've had, our vendors look at all of our roofs, all of our blacktop, asphalt, concrete, all that. And so all that information that we have been gathering through that is built into this plan. Obviously, the biggest one out there is your HVAC, just because you're dealing with boilers and chillers, where you're talking $300,000 to $400,000 at a pop when those go out. So one of the things as we work with our vendors and as we work with WIBL and things like that, is looking at how those plans can be spread out in terms of that, in terms of costs per year throughout the plan. So what we ask them to do is, hey, give us your worst-case scenario of stacking everything. I just, you know, show me the worst-case scenario, and then what we can do, what we're going to be doing with them over the next several weeks, is peeling those layers off now, okay? How far can we push these out? For example, we know the Medleyview boilers and the Medleyview chillers, those have got to go. Those are the original, and Medleyview was opened in 99. So we're dealing, they've done a pretty good job beyond their life expectancy right now. Last year, we replaced some tubes in there that we were able to get, but we know that's a high-ticket priority that needs to happen. So what we really need to do is take a look, okay, we've got to get that set. So if we do that up front this summer, how are these other projects being pushed down the road? And I know in the past, I've talked with all you about keeping that, I call it the cash balance in the back. So when Dan says, you see the negative, I'm telling Dan, and Dan's looking at me, I'm saying, no, that can't happen. We need to have a nice million, almost million-five in there in cash on hand if something else occurs out there. So overall, kind of looking at how we map things out, although we have some negative numbers in there, I'm kind of pretty pleased of how this really works out, even in the worst-case scenario of what it is. It could have been a lot worse as we go through, and part of that is because we've done a really good job maintaining our facilities and specifically our HVAC and boilers and being very strategic in planning and keeping the maintenance agreements up on those, so.
The goal really is to be as proactive as we can and plan for these expenditures at the right time, because, you know, the boiler's going to go out on the coldest day of the year. That's the rules, right? So when that happens, it costs more. So the idea is to identify, to get as much as we can out of the assets for the taxpayers, but same time not push it so far that we have those additional emergency kind of expenses. So we're really working to try to do that and identify those things appropriately. Lots of school districts say, well, we get this much money, so this is how much we spend. We're trying to kind of turn that a little bit and say, what do we need and are we spending on the right things, not just spending what we have coming into the coffers.
Then as we propose our appropriations for Justin each year, what we do, like this past year, I turned it to him, these are X, Y, and Z projects that we're going to be able to do, and this is what the along is, and for each one of those in there. And that's what the purpose of this is, as we go through, to do that. You know, the other thing, in terms of roofing, we're actually pretty good on our roofs out there. A lot of our asphalt, blacktopping, concrete, we're pretty good. So we actually have the seal coat rotations in here as well. We were able to get a little bit ahead of the curb last year in terms of getting some good low quotes in from some good contractors. As the contractors, there was a concrete hold last year, if you remember. So a lot of the blacktopping agencies do both, so they were able to keep their workers working. They were able to kind of give some lower quotes to keep their workers working, which really benefited us as well. Like the middle school last year, when we did that front parking lot, we had a savings of about $30,000 in terms of that. So those are, we always try to do the best that we can out there, and, you know, the other thing I do want to point out, you'll see on the agenda later on today, they're part of our PI and part of the plan, is the purchasing of three buses each year in terms of that. And one of the reasons we want to move forward with those now, there are new regulations starting in '24 that any new specs on buses that are built in '24, they have to have two DEF tanks on them instead of one that's on there now, and that will increase the cost of $20,000 per bus with the specs in '24, in addition to the regular increase of the buses. So there's three purchases on here, tied of 23 stock buses that are left. We've been shopping around, they have 20 left on the lot. They're holding three for us, so we'll be able to at least save $60,000 by getting those stock buses now. So we really try to be really good stewards and to map out, and I really want to give Dan kudos. He's been very patient with us, and I ask him a lot of questions of, what about this and what about that, and can we do that? And I try to do the best with the PI money I can, and I really appreciate Dan's guidance and support, so thank you, Dan.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I have a question. It kind of sticks out like a sore thumb to me that '26, '27, and '28 are obviously three years that we are looking at more money?
Which pages are you looking at, Dale?
Well...
Or which page number?
Well, page one and page two.
First and second page. Yeah, so in particular, the cash balance on the first page, that 90-91, it shows the cash balance dipping because we're spending a pretty significant amount right now in those three years, right?
Yes.
So go ahead, I didn't want to interrupt your question.
Well, that's, you know, my question is, I know, obviously, we try to plan things out. That's what we're doing here, is trying to make things so that we don't have them in back-to-back years as much as possible, I would think.
Correct.
I'm just wondering why that seems to be...
Remember, this was the worst-case scenario, and we were looking at the boilers and replacements of where they were at. So that's why I wanted to present this, or go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, it's also, that's exactly why it's still a draft. Those areas, we know we've got to fix '26, '27, and '28, and so we're reworking some of those projections now with those three years, because that's, it's too much of an expenditure in those three years. So whether we're reducing, whether we're reducing items or putting items to a different place, or figuring out how to spread the cost, or rebidding, or relooking, those are all things that we're looking at in order to help those three years get to a more sustainable position.
Okay, come on, just...
Yeah. So Dale, the...
I'm thinking about permanent improvement funds.
Yeah. So the goal is, when you look at that, remember, we want that to be about a 1.4, 1.5 is the balance in each of those closing years. So that's why we were looking at the boilers and the chillers and all that. That's why we said, give us the worst-case scenario, so that now we can kind of peel back those projects and spread them out.
Okay, so are we still going to be able to maintain around a 1.4, 1.5 during those years?
That's our goal, yes. We're trying to get back to that, correct? Yes.
Okay, so probably we're looking at Medleyview, possibly Mark Twain, maybe?
Well, Mark Twain, remember, they, remember the coldest day of the year, the boiler goes out. So really, the goal right now is Medleyview. Right now, and then everything else we kind of have to work around and do in phases, so.
When you say peel it back, you're thinking you're going to change your boilers out in the summer, get the best price you can get, get them on ship, so you're not ordering that thing and having to do it for...
Or, yes, right.
Because it is an absolute emergency.
Or reassess whether or not we can get a couple more years out of something, or is the bus fleet up to date better than we thought, so we can prolong, you know, a bus purchase? You know, we've got a couple years before we're in the predicament, but we don't want to wait till we're there. We want to plan ahead and say, okay, if we can, if we can skew a couple of these things back without risking an emergency repair, then we can, we can manage to pull that cash balance back up and have that sustainability piece that we're looking for.
Yeah. And sometimes it can be spread over fiscal years, you know, in terms of that, where the POs cut one, but it's paid out in another, and they're paid out in sections, so. But you're exactly right, Corey. It's kind of like, you know, you want to go out and buy a snow blower the first day of, you know, six inches of snow, and they're skyrocketing, so.
You can get a snow blower when it's, you know...
Yeah.
Getting the equipment is sometimes a problem, so.
So it's like a big piece, this is a big puzzle in terms of that, but we are, we're in good shape with our facilities and that, but we need to make sure that we're staying ahead of that, so we don't get, you know, behind the eight ball and all that, so.
Okay. And then as far as like, you're talking about the floors and stuff, like there's the bounties and all that stuff that we got, that I know need maintenance and all that, are we taking all that and stuff in consideration, so that Carol don't get really mad at us?
Yeah, flooring and all, that's within the buildings itself, and all that is built into this.
Okay, maintenance as well as...
Yes.
Replacement. Corey, this is a good question for you, I guess. How far out now are you feeling, like, when you have to order something, whenever you have something happening, like an emergency now for somebody, say, a commercial air going out, are you able to order stuff and get in in a reasonable amount of time right now? Is it getting better, or...
Yeah, I think it's getting a lot better. I think with probably what we're doing with here, we would want a specialty item, you might have to sacrifice something that you would really want if it was an emergency, instead of getting, getting what you would, what would currently match your system. You would make sacrifices in an emergency that I think would probably end up being maybe a problem down the line. You might be retrofitting a little bit more, or just not, not getting what you want because you're unprepared, so.
And that's important to have that cash balance as well.
Yeah.
For something that, you know, you don't know if that's going to creep up on you, so.
I know that, I have a friend that's a contractor here in the area, and he's staying in special items. He's still six months out on a lot of the special item stuff now.
So one of the reasons we wanted to get this in front of you is as we're working through this and getting it to a sustainable place, a lot of the things that are poised to be done in 2025, we need to put orders in for almost a year ahead to make sure that we're getting what we want for the price that we want. So I don't think, it's not ready yet to bring to you some of those boilers and some of those items, because we're still trying to balance this output it's going to be soon. And so we wanted to continue with this presentation, even though we're still working on '27, '28 and getting that where it should be, because to the point, like, when we do have it there, we want to get some of this stuff ordered, and it may take a year to get in, so.
So you may be making the down payment for the order, but it... So you, you may be making the down payment for the order, but it may be two years down the road because we know it's going to be, you know, a 14th month process to get something in, so.
Good. Good. I know there's a lot of farmers that are having a terrible time getting equipment and stuff now. I mean, it's, it's terrible.
Our goal would be at the, the December, uh, meeting, um, to go through this and, and almost do a final presentation to you. And then also, um, we would have, be talking HVAC boilers, how this would all stack out and, and get that on the agenda as well, so. So we can get, like Corey said, get some of those things ordered in the process going, so.
And I'm, I'm thinking, uh, the P I approximately 2.2. And then where you have these numbers here, it looks like that there, things are going to work out pretty, you know, it looks like, e- even with the heavier numbers there, that I think it's going to work out okay. I realize we got about 500 going out right off the top of the, of the, of the P I money because of the field.
Yeah. So our, our goal is always to appropriate, we appropriate about 1.4 to 1.5 per year. And then once again, having about 1.4, 1.5 in the back, so.
Yeah, it's important with inflation when it is and everything, so. All right, I'm, I'm, I'm done. I just, the numbers are my thing. I, I just really kind of want to make sure that we're going to be never insolvent. We can't be because then we get in trouble.
Dan, thank you very, very much. We appreciate it, so.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks, Dan.
Feel free to sneak on out.
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you. Okay, next we'll go to Mr. Blevins.
That's my mic again, sorry. Well.
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
After that outstanding performance you did last month, I, I just don't want you to feel a little nervous or anything about it.
That helps. Okay, well, um, looks like you guys will have to be looking to the screens up there uh, because there'll be several visuals that I'll try to, to go through. To kind of start off with, uh, Amy, if you don't care to go to that next slide, just as a reminder, the purpose of the forecast is you have to provide forecasts to be in compliance with Ohio revise code. And so you issue a forecast in November and then you provide an update in May. Also, it's just good to be able to give the board and the community, uh, the current standing of our fiscal position and what is projected moving forward. Now, I do want to brag a little bit. My presentation might not have been great, but the fiscal year 2023 finished within 1% of what had been forecasted in May. So I think that that's good and I'm trying to stay pretty close to that. If you don't care to go to the next one here. So what Dan just covered for you all deals with the permanent improvement money. So, you know, we have two P I levies that are continuing and that money comes in, like Steve talked about, working with Dan and Bradley paying to build a capital plan so that that money gets put to good use. And then you've got several other funds that each have specific purposes. And they can all, uh, they all have an impact on the general fund because if you didn't have those, then you'd be looking at spending out strictly general fund money. So the general fund is what the five-year forecast is going to be talking about. And it's the most pliable, if you want to think of it that way, source of funds that we have because there's not a lot of restriction on how it gets used and then we use it for our day-to-day operations. Now, I do want to preface as you're looking at this slide here that anytime you have a forecast, it's, you have to remember that it's under the current condition. So if nothing was to change, this is what we're looking at. And a lot of times forecasts look worse in the later years because what you have going on currently, um, compounds as you move throughout the forecast. Uh, so similar to what we looked at in May, the expected expenses are greater than the revenues. And now, if you remember, I said that fiscal year 23 ended within 1% of what was projected in May. So the deficit that is currently projected right now in fiscal year 24, it is possible that we could break even or even end up with a slightly positive balance. And if we did that, it would still be within 1% of our total general fund budget. So yes, we are projecting to spend at a deficit. Uh, right now, that's a small deficit, but I don't want you to, I guess, even though it's small, you can see on the forecast there that that is compounding and in the later years, the cash balance is decreasing. So what changed since May, um, from the May forecast to the November forecast? And a couple of the big things that I wanted to highlight was if you remember last month, I talked about the tax updates that were taking place. And with those, that's going to change the amount of tax revenue that we bring in which I'll talk about here in a little bit is very important to the district. It's a huge source of funding for us. So with the reappraisals, we would see an increase from what I had projected in May to what now we're hearing from the auditors that we think we can expect to see. And we have an increase in revenue in that particular subsection of our revenue. Now you'll notice that we see kind of half of that in 24 and then we would see a full increased amount in 25. And the reason for that is just the way the fiscal year and the tax years fall, we would be taking in kind of half of that revenue in this current fiscal year. Now, the other big change to note is our state aid. So I had kind of mentioned in May, they were talking about, um, adopting the new fair school funding plan and changes that that might bring to us. And it really worked out good for our district and really a lot of districts in the state because they updated, uh, the input costs to what it costs schools to be able to educate a student. And so for us, what we projected we'll see, and remember this slide is showing the difference from what was projected in May. So the difference from what was projected in May to what we now think, given the amounts that we have, um, is a $1.5 million increase in state aid. That amount looks lower in 25 and then the subsequent years, that's going from year to year, just a year-to-year change. And the reason it would be lower in 25 would be because of the full tax amount that we'd be receiving would adjust our local share, so they would then adjust our state aid to kind of match that. We'd receive less. I took, I blocked out that last column in 28 because there's no comparison between the May forecast and November forecast. The May forecast did not have fiscal year 28 on it. Okay. So this kind of takes a look at the current fiscal year and those bars don't really match up with exactly like what you're seeing there. Um, so that's showing the cash balance. The blue bar is our beginning cash balance and then the projected ending cash balance would be the orange bar. And if you're having a little trouble kind of reading that, it's, uh, just showing our projected revenue and expenditure and then kind of the same thing you saw on the abbreviated slide. Uh, it's showing that we're projecting that deficit of 966,000. This is a, just a breakdown of our current year fiscal year. What we assume will be the sources of revenue based on what we've received so far. Local taxes, as you can see, is the blue section there makes up a huge portion. And then state aid is the orange portion. We've got kind of a combination between approximately 34 million in tax revenue and 22 million in state aid, making up the biggest portion of our revenue funding. I think we can move on to expenses. So here, this pie chart is showing our expense breakdown and you see that the green section there is personnel costs. Now, it kind of looks overwhelming when you look at it, but you have to remember that for every public school, that is the largest cost, is personnel cost. We project we're going to spend about $53 million in personnel and have about 63 million in total expenditures. All right. So then back to the overall forecast. Um, on the left-hand side there, what you've got is the small blue bar that you see is from 2020 to 2023, the change in revenue. And then the larger blue bar is the change in revenue that we project from 24 to 28. Now, it's, the smaller bar there from 2023, we saw an increase of about 0.06%. And we anticipate seeing an increase in our overall revenue of about 1.55% moving forward. And that's due to those factors that I explained of increased revenue from tax collection and the change in the state funding formula that allows us to receive more state aid. Uh, the other side, the orange bar is probably maybe more pertinent to the impact that we're going to see on the cash balance. So from 20 to 23, you see there was just a 1.2, I can hardly see it, uh, 1.22% increase in cost. And then projected moving forward, we're seeing about a 6% increase. Now, the reason we're seeing that giant jump there is because if you remember, 20 to 23, we had S R funds. At the end of this fiscal year, those are all spent out. And so anything that had been tied to S R money now just comes back to the general fund. Okay. So this slide is familiar to the one that I had showed in May. Um, and it hasn't changed much. This, the bar graph there on the left-hand side is just showing the breakdown of what comprises our revenue. And it's just another visual to show you that the largest components of revenue for the school district are real estate and state funding. Uh, you can see from 23 to 24, we've got a slight jump there. And then those bars kind of even out just because we see that, you know, the reappraisal took place this year. So we'll see that money, some of that money anyways, in fiscal year 24. And then like was mentioned in the previous slide, we're not going to see a whole lot of increase moving forward with how much revenue we take in. So this just kind of shows again, general property taxes being, um, that largest component. There's not a lot of significant growth in terms of the total percentage of what this makes of, of the total revenue. But it does mean that we're going to continue to rely heavily on that funding source to operate the schools. This current fiscal year projection for general property tax is 32.3 million and is projected to be 35 by FY '28. So you see there's not a huge increase in that. So the state aid, I've tried to circle there in red where we see that bump and them changing the funding formula. And so we've, um, gotten more money for state aid and we'll continue to see that additional income. Uh, but you'll notice that our state aid as a portion of our overall revenue decreases slightly through the forecast. And this is just again, changes in, um, our local share that are going to cause that to decrease. So our expenditures at a glance, again, this is another familiar looking graph from May. Not a lot has changed here either. Salaries and benefits always make up the bulk of costs in any district. And so you'll see, if you look at the graph on the right-hand side, those blue bars there, you kind of see that decrease from 2020 to 2023, starts to jump back up in 2023. But that's the introduction of the S R funds, right? So that's why in the general fund, if you remember, the forecast is just strictly looking at the general fund, those expenses kind of come off the general fund and they're being paid through S R money. But then now that that money is spent out, we're starting to see this increase and that trend will continue moving forward. This is just again, showing us salaries and benefits as our workforce becomes more experienced, their wages are going to increase. New contract amounts went into this year and you combine that with the fact that some of these, some of this personnel cost had been tied directly to S R funding. That's why we're seeing a jump in this. Uh, also, as you know, um, insurance costs more every year, seems like.
Were you on that? Uh, can you go back?
Yep.
Yes, I can.
Don't hate me.
It's all right.
Go down one more. Down. There. You probably had, but you're, you're, this side, you had to get your head together on my question, maybe. We're talking about the insurance and where it's projected to be and all that. If you take what we paid for insurance for last fiscal year and what we're happy to pay for this fiscal year, and we're not just talking about health insurance either, you know, we're, we're looking at life insurance and everything else as far as what it actually. What was the increase, the percentage increase of, and I'm not looking at comparing it to the general fund or any of that, just the insurance period from, what was the, what was the increase percentage wise?
Well.
Approximately, you know, just approximately.
From 23 to 24 here, because that's where we've been looking at the change, we'd 24. I mean, if you want to give me a minute, I can kind of.
No calculator.
Yeah?
No calculator.
No calculator? All right, let's do this.
I can't see that.
Well, what did, what did the EPC predict the premium? What was the percentage?
Right, but you have to understand you can't go by that because we're defined contribution, um, for that. And so I do believe it was a 2% increase of what it was of the dollar defined contribution that was given. I believe it's 2%. Carol, you're on that committee. Yours at 3. So we talk about that, whatever we had the previous year for healthcare, then you, it, it's increased by 3%. So the premiums of how healthcare went up aren't the same as what we're paying out because we're defined dollar contributions. Does that make sense? And then also remember when you're talking, um, insurance overall, even though the insurance is in this benefits, the other piece of property fleet liability and cyber, remember cyber's a big one, those are huge, um, increases as well on the other side of insurance.
And that's the question I'm asking. Um, if you lump it all together, okay, here is what it cost two years ago. This is what it's costing this year. Now, when you divide that in, you're going to get a percentage back of what the total inflation was, I guess, cost of insurance. And I think I figured to be around 12% when I did it, I thought. And that's, and I could be wrong. And that's why, you know, I can't see that. My, my eyes are not letting me see that, but.
We, we would, and we can get that for you because we'll have to go back into the archives to see fleet, property, cyber and break it out. Because you remember when, when we approved it in June or whenever. Yeah, July, June, going into July because it was on a fiscal year. Those were all, remember, we had to go out and bid all those separately to get the best deals that we could through Master, so.
I know, I know the health insurance was, well, I mean, I, I think you knew that in all the talk you had.
Well, the, the increase was 7.5%. But, but once again, even though it's 7.5, correct, that we're not increasing it 7.5 because it's a defined dollar contribution.
I, I know, I did that, but that's my, that's the point I was trying to make is the dollar contribution versus the true percent. Okay. And sometimes a true percentage can be much greater than you, than you think it could possibly be. You know, when you just look at, you break down one from the other, we put it together. You're talking about a lot of money. You know, I'm, if you're looking at 3%, uh, I'll make this figure up, a million dollars, you know, just from the, the one pot of gold there, if you want to look at it that way, versus taking all of them and putting them together. And now look what the increase is dollar-wise, that's taken, that's taken a big, it much, it looks much bigger when you look at it dollar-wise than if you just look at it percentage-wise as what I'm going to say. Okay. And that's why maybe, maybe next month, we might, we can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah. And, and same with utilities. Utilities is another, it's, it's, it's a shot in the dark right now. And, and you'll see later on in the agenda here, we're given, um, the EPC authority on our behalf to go out and bid for the best, um, natural gas prices. We have no obligation for them to go out, but at least it gives them permission on our behalf to go out as a large group to bid that. And right now, that has helped us to last several years bidding through them because we've, we've been under market for that. So we, we try to save wherever we can in terms of that. But yeah, Dale, you're right, the, the percentages versus the dollar amounts, they, they can definitely show that.
Well, and, and you know, like just for a family, you know, uh, I might only be making this amount of money and I'm saying, well, I'm spending this percent of what I'm making on food. Well, guess what? Go to the, go to the grocery store now, you know. I might say 3% and 5%, but golly, that, look at the dollar amount, you know.
Yeah.
That's taken, my, my kid's not going to get two fresh shoes. That's taken, my, my kid's not going to get 2% usage, you know? And, and the school's kind of getting to that point, I think, if we're not real careful. Because we're not getting a, a big raise in our, our allowances here, folks. You know, we've been working, uh, on, on pretty much the same amount of money for years, really, we have. And trust me, I've been around here 16 years just here, you know? And I'm, I'm amazed that we've been able to keep pulling it off here every year, honestly. I'm done, sorry. Thanks, Carol. You guys, thanks to you guys too. You, you guys have a lot to do with what we're getting by with.
Okay, well, um. I was just thinking, don't derail. It'll take me a second to get back and, and know where I was at now. Uh, um, okay, so the blue and orange on the left, that's your revenue and expense comparison, right as we get projected and move through the years there. And then the blue on the right is cash balance that decreases as we see that, that growing cost that exceeds revenue. Um, what's kind of important to look at, uh, if you take a look three years out, you can kind of see thereby FY '26, uh, trending toward a cash balance of $10 million. Now, fiscally sound practice is to have at least three months' worth of operating expense on hand. For us, that's right around $8 million. Uh, we have months that come in higher, months that come in lower, but I just kind of averaged it out. So you can see that by that point in time, we would be at a point where, um, we would not be in a good position, right? We wouldn't be able to fulfill that moving forward through the, the next fiscal year. And then you see financial year, the five-year outlook of having a negative cash balance. We will never have a negative cash balance, and that's why I thought it was important to kind of preface to, you know, the forecasts always look bad towards the end. But this is under the assumption that absolutely nothing changes. Obviously, changes take place, and that's why we do this, or part of the reason why we do this, is so that you all are made aware and that we have plenty of time to develop a plan to address things that we see is coming up that might be an issue. Uh, this next one, again, this is a slide I used in May that I thought was good. I'll probably continue to use it because it just puts your revenue and expenses side by side, and the yellow line is the cash balance. So you can see it where it starts to decrease a little bit, that that in itself starts to kind of grow exponentially as you get towards the end of the forecast. And again, this is with nothing changing and just showing that your expenses will continue to outpace revenue and at a greater, um, degree as you move further on in the forecast. So this is a visual that I have used in the past that is, I think is really helpful. If you can look at that graph there on the right, it kind of shows the sort of yellowish color would be what's called fiscal caution, fiscal watch, and fiscal emergency. And again, with, if nothing is done, it kind of shows where you would trend towards. Now, there's some information on the left-hand side that just kind of talks through some of that, and it gives kind of examples on estimated millage that would be necessary to avoid this. And it would be strictly, nothing's done other than looking at the finances as they currently are and proposing any of those changes. That's, that's kind of the numbers that you would be looking at to address the changes. I think this is a pretty powerful slide to put in here. Uh, you see that the cash balance decreases there on the left in dark blue bars. And then on the right-hand side, those two graphs kind of show what a certified position costs. And now, the reason I use certified positions is because it's a number that I have actual solid figures for. Um, i- i- if anything was to address any position changes, you know, you would want to take a look at everybody. But the certified position, those are just numbers that the software can use to easily kind of put into play, hey, here's, here's what you might be looking at staff reduction-wise, just to break even, um, if you had to go that route. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and get that out there so that people could see kind of the impact. Okay, so on this slide, we've got a few different visuals to demonstrate where the cost lies. In the top left-hand corner, it just shows, um, millage cost to, to somebody with a $150,000 home. It's like, hey, here's each individual fiscal year and kind of what they would be estimated to pay in order for the district to break even. And then on the right-hand side, it's just another take of that graph where I showed the position reduction and kind of how many positions you would need to reduce in order to break even. Um, and then one maybe to focus on there would be the one on the bottom. So I know that we have classrooms where, uh, we have maybe a higher teacher-student ratio. But what this does is this takes a look at all the students in the district and all of the teachers that we have, and kind of builds a ratio in those blue bars there. And that red line that starts to separate shows what happens if you are unable to address the fiscal situation and there's any cuts that need to be made that you obviously start to, I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, right? If you have the same amount or a growing population of students and you have to reduce positions, that you're going to have a greater ratio that student to teacher, um, that I guess could have an impact on learning.
Well, and you know, there's something else, um, I think that is real important for our future is, right now, uh, the number of years that it takes for a teacher to get to retirement age, the number of years that the, the actual teaching, um, is getting higher. So we're paying more, you know, obviously, the, the more years somebody has in, the, the more money is going out. So we're, we've got these high, you know, a lot more money going out to the, to those people that's been around longer. And also, um, the number of new teacher, new, new employees that might be coming into our field is getting less and less. So in order to attract them, we're going to have to come up with more and more money to attract them. So both ends now are getting harder and harder to, to weigh out so that there's a balance, there's, there's, the things are getting way out of balance just simply because of the way that the, the retirement, I, number of years instead of age, I'll say. And then also, uh, just being attractive to the younger people, just to get them here, you know? So it's, 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 it's going to be, it's going to get tougher. I mean, it's definitely going to get tougher.
So, uh, you know, similar to May, I think the biggest takeaway is that the COVID relief funds that had sort of helped us stave off addressing an issue that all schools face, right? The costs continue to rise, and your revenue does not keep pace with that. Um, we've now, we've, we've hit that point. I've talked about it, I'm sure John talked about it before I was here, and now that's where, kind of where we're at. So you have a lot of stuff coming back onto the general fund that before, uh, because of those ESR funds, we're able to kind of use those to address them. And Chris is just yawning because Dale interrupted me. If he hadn't, this would have been a lot more interesting.
That's not the reason, brother, I'm telling you that.
You won't have to worry about it, we're too much longer.
Um, but I, I, you know, I did want to point out that, obviously, this is something I want to keep you all informed about. Uh, there, things can change, and as they change, I try to keep you as updated as possible. Uh, the legislative impact on this, I haven't seen anything come across that it looks like it would be beneficial to what I've just presented to you, right? So I just want to keep that in mind, that there's, there are changes. I know that 187 was in the Senate. Uh, I don't know if they talked about it today or not, but.
I don't think so.
No?
I think there's still election getting back. I mean, there hasn't been too much movement at all really.
Well, they'll be out for holidays here soon too, probably, so. Um, but you know, we just need to keep that in mind, that if something does happen that maybe takes away from, um, the biggest chunk of our revenue, like I talked about earlier in the presentation, then again, that's another issue that we'll have to address. And that was about maybe three, four times longer than my May forecast presentation, so I'm done.
Just a quick question. I, I've heard some talk about averaging those appraisals and valuations over three years. Will that affect this?
So if I understand correctly, that's what 187 was looking at, was then taking a three-year backlook. And the way that they tried to sell it to people, from my understanding, is that you'd have that three-year average, so the amount that you're going to see would be lower. And I think for us, uh, I, I kind of talked about it last month with that tax presentation, that it would probably go from what we're currently projecting down, um, maybe 13% decrease. Uh, and then you would end up seeing the remainder of that money in 2026, right? Because if they do that three-year look back, we had reappraisals this year, they're using this year's reappraisal, um, they're, they're using this appraisal in two previous years, and then that would just kind of float with that so that by 26, we would be looking at the reappraisals from 23. So you'd capture that money, you'd capture it later, and it, the, the impact would be different by 26, obviously. And there's no guarantee that by then, there's not something else that would come up.
Right. Thank you. The, the 187 passed in the House.
Right.
So now it's in the Senate.
So we'll see what changes.
Talking to the senators, some of them, um, I'm not getting really too many warm and fuzzies from it, but, okay, thank you, Justin. Sorry for interrupting you, but it does say board discussion at the beginning of this. Okay, um. Can I have a motion for the, uh, is recommended by the Board of Education to approve the meeting items C through G. Do you have a motion, please?
I move to approve items C through G.
Second. Got a first from Ms. Neese, second from Mr. Daffler. Roll call.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodora?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Anzler?
Yes.
Okay, and those items have passed. If we move to section three, um, which is the revision approval of the 2023-2024 school calendar. The, anybody want to speak to this?
Yes, um, we are proposing a change this evening, a recommendation that in March, the Ohio presidential primary is March 19th. We, which is a Tuesday. We currently have a scheduled staff in-service day on March 18th. So we are proposing that we move that scheduled day one day forward to the 19th because, as all, everyone knows, um, our high school is used as a polling place. The Board of Elections does have the authority to use our buildings during the elections. It's not necessarily an agreement, or we, uh, say it's okay. They, they have the authority to, to do that. And so they do. We, we, we honestly didn't want it. We want to be good steward partners and, um, you know, work with the Board of Elections, but we did not have a contract. We weren't able to vote on it. We weren't able to say, yes, it's fine for us. They just basically commandeer our school grounds. And obviously, for safety purposes, it is really best that our students not be there on those days. So, um, we had our personalized learning day last week for the entire district, and it, and of course, that puts our students out of school. So obviously, the presidential primary is only held every four years. So we are proposing that instead of students being off of school on Monday, they're off of school the following day, um, for safety purposes and just the continuity of everyone having, um, the same day off. So we are recommending that change for the school calendar for this year.
All for good reasons. Questions? Nope? Okay. I have a motion, please?
I move for the approval of 23-24 revised school calendar change.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Mr. Anzler, a second from Mrs. Getter. Roll call.
Mrs. Getter?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Tobine?
Yes.
Mr. Anzler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Okay, well, that revision has passed. Next, we go to section four, which is a consent agenda, uh, items A through I. It is item A, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight extended student trips. Uh, Mr. Pitroff, Carmack, uh, Schugley, um, M.H. Wrestling Team, went to North Canton Hoover Holiday Wrestling Tournament, North Canton, Ohio. Be the approval of out-of-state travel overnight student trips. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following out-of-state travel, Midburg High School Wrestling Team, North Carolina Hoover Holiday Wrestling, North Canton, Ohio. Another one? Item C is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve Landon Campbell for tuition-free enrollment for the 2023-24 school year per the Ohio Revised Code 3313.64, superintendent agreement for free attendance.
This is a senior, he'd like to finish his senior year with us.
Thank you. Item D, presentation and acceptance of consolidated school report nutrition services 2023 compliance report. Is recommended by the superintendent to approve the cons- consolidated school report nutrition services 2023 compliance report.
This is the report we have to give to the board every year that basically states, um, we are meeting all the federal guidelines for nutrition standards. Um, and in order to do that, to receive, to be part of the free and reduced lunch program, we have to do that. So we are in compliance. So we just have to stand this in to say that, yes, here's our report, and yes, you approved it.
Thank you. Uh, item E is approval of Southwestern Ohio EPC natural gas resolution. It is recommended authorizing Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, acting duly as a member of the Ohio School Consortium, to issue a request for proposal for the purchase of competitive retail natural gas service from the lowest and best bidder submitted to the consortium, and authorizing the board to purchase competitive retail natural gas service from such bidding, or from such bidder, I'm sorry.
This is what I referenced too before, where we can go as a group, as an EPC of all school districts, kind of combining together, um, power and buying to get a lower rate for our natural gas. So it has benefited us for many years, and hopefully it will continue to benefit us as well, so.
Thank you. Item F, in accordance with board policy BHBA, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following request for training as offered by the Montgomery County Educational Service Center. On February 4th of 2024, annual board members institute, uh, Mr. Anzler, Mr. Daffler, Mrs. Getter, Mr. Maury, and Mrs. Neese.
Actually, I think it's the third. So we'll note that. I think the third is a Saturday. Is that usually what it is?
Yes.
Yes. So we'll fix that.
Okay, so we will amend that.
Yes.
To the third. Ian, you've been some of these. You want to speak to that?
They're just excellent. Um, you know, they, we have, there are attorneys there that help us, you know, understand laws, procedures, um, you know, how to work with our superintendent and central office, um, and how to do the best things for our students.
Thank you. Item G is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following job description, 319A clinic nurse as presented.
So as Dale, you referred to earlier, it's, um, getting harder and harder to find positions out there. So in the past, um, in order to be, um, a school nurse with a title "school nurse," you had to have additional, um, courses above and beyond your, um, bachelor's or your master's in order to have the official ODE license of school nurse. So what they have, um, done now is they have given, um, those that have bachelor's science nurses and masters in, um, science and nursing, they do what is called a license registration, um, in which you can do, um, all the exact same things a school nurse can do, but you have to be under the supervision of a school nurse who has taken the additional classes that classify them as a school nurse. So we have to have a job description to align with the registration portion of ODE for a school nurse.
But both are considered, are allowable under.
Exactly.
Department of Education and workforce.
Yep.
Okay.
That's a mouthful now, that, if you remember how to say that, so.
Thank you. Next is item H, approval of resolution. It is, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution as presented, Resolution L. 72023, PDF 104KB.
So in order to, um, we need to go ahead and close out this employee's record, um, with the district. So in order to do that, we need board approval to go. So in order to do that, we need Board approval to go ahead and close out employment with the district.
Thank you. And item I is recommended that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda A through H. Do I have a motion?
I recommend for the approval of consent items A through H.
I second it.
We have a first from Mr. Daffler, second from Mrs. Neese. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Anzler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Geter?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed. Next, we'll move on to section five, Human Resources Agenda Items. Item A is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. And I will read this once, and it's the same for item B. Employment in the Myersburg School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII in an FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted Board policies. Item B is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports for certificated and classified supplemental stipend.
Business as usual.
Business as usual, and no changes, no. Thank you. Item C, approval of Contract for Assistant Maintenance Supervisor. Is recommended by the superintendent that Jim Slider is awarded a two-year, 261-day administrative contract with Myersburg City Schools, effective December 11th of 2023 through June 30th of 2025. Jim Slider will assume the role of Assistant Maintenance Supervisor on the administrative salary schedule, salary placement administrative schedule filed GEBR1.
So as you know, Rich Baker, who was our maintenance supervisor, went up to tackle the building projects up in Troy that are going to be doing, and then Ed Hutchinson, who was our assistant, moved up to Rich's position, and so Jim Slider will be coming in to replace Ed's position. Jim is a, Slider's a member of the community. All three of his kids have gone through the district. He did a fabulous job. In the interview, has great experience as being supervisors in the past, great insight in terms of HVAC and mechanical, and we had a nice interview committee, and Carol was on it representing custodians, and we had maintenance custodians on there, and it was unanimous that he offered him the position to move forward. So we're very pleased to have him, so.
Good. Thank you. Item D is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Items A through C. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve Human Resources Items A through C.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first from Mrs. Geter, a second from Mr. Daffler?
No.
Was it Anzler? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Anzler?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Geter?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, and those items have passed. Section six, Agreements and Contracts. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following agreements and contracts as presented. Warren County Educational Service Center, $104,125, and Warren County Educational Service Center, $104,125.
These are student placements at our area learning centers.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of agreements and contracts.
Second. We got a first from Mr. Anzler, second from Mr. Daffler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anzler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Geter?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Okay, items have passed. Move on to the Financial Agenda. Item A is recommended by the Treasurer CFO, the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports.
I like how Steve says, "It's just business as usual. Each month, I bring these to you all. This is what we think we're going to get. This is what we intend to spend."
Thank you. Item B, Authorization to Request Advance of Tax Settlements 2023, Collection Year 2024.
And that is, that's done annually, so that we're able to get that tax money as soon as the honor gets it, instead of them hanging on to it?
Thank you. Item C, Approval of the District Five-Year Forecast for November 2023, Fiscal Year 24. Is recommended that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 24, November 2023, five-year forecast as submitted to the Ohio Department of Education. Would you please review all that again?
I was going to say, Amy will bring up my slide.
Do you want to add anything before we move on?
Nope, the PDFs that you're seeing there, it's just, that's the format that needs to be used. So you guys improve it, then I go into the system up on it.
Okay, you did a very nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, Trivial Transfer. The Treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the filing transfer from the 001 General Fund to the 006 Food Services, amount of $18,110.10. That's a big meal, wouldn't it?
Yeah. So we had a set of kids who were preschool students who received services through food services, and this amount is to cover that cost.
Okay, thank you. Item E is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following purchase orders and then and now invoices as presented. Rush Truck Centers, $333,792.
This is on here because it's over that $25,000 threshold.
Okay.
Anne, we're getting a good deal.
We're getting a good deal. These are the ones where the 23 models before we have to spend 20,000 more per bus, so 24 models, so.
Yeah, that is good. I remember that anything over 5,000 had to be brought to the Board, and you talk about a long list of financial stuff. Okay. Item F, Approval of Purchase of Faithful Performance Bonds. Resolution be it resolved that the Board of Education of Myersburg City Schools hereby authorizes the Treasurer CFO to purchase faithful performance bonds for three years, effective January 1st of 2024 through January 1st of 2027, for the following positions and amounts. Superintendent, $50,000. Board President, $50,000. Director of Business, $50,000.
This is procedure, you all have to approve this in order for you to be bonded.
Okay, thank you. Item G is recommended that the Board of Education approve the financial items A through F. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve financial items A through F.
I second.
First from Mrs. Neese, second from Mrs. Geter. Roll call, please.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Geter?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Anzler?
Yes.
Okay, and those items have passed. We move on to section eight, Acceptance of Donations. $3,000 from the Eagles, ARI 2306, for the Myersburg High School Athletic Department. $1,000 for girls' basketball, $1,000 for boys' basketball, $1,000 for the Gridiron Club. $200 from the women of St. John's Church. Donations to the Myersburg City Schools in memory of Jennifer Templin. $200 from Brian Cameron, and $50 from Hugh and Jane Cameron. I would just like to say thank you to all, for all the donations that we have. A special thanks to the Eagles for their donation, and it still tells you what type of filing that Mrs. Templin had. You know, she was quite a woman, I have to say that. She was quite a woman, and, you know, this has been even a while ago since her passing, and people are still remembering. That's a great honor for the family. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the donations?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Second.
We got a first from Mr. Anzler, a second from Mrs. Geter. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Geter?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Anzler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Approved. Move on to section nine, Appointment of a NVCTC Representative. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Molly Williams as representative to the Miami Valley Career Technology Center, the Board of Education, effective immediately. Molly will complete the remainder of Joe Isaacovich's three-year term, January 1st of 2023 through December 31st of 2025.
I'd like to read a little bit about Molly, if that's okay, for everyone.
Please do, yeah.
Well, Molly is a lifelong resident of Myersburg, Ohio. She married her high school sweetheart, Mark, and they have three children, Megan, Mitch, and Mia. They also have three grandchildren. Since she has so many Ms. in her life, she named her shop in downtown Myersburg, M. &amp; Company. I highly recommend you visit. Very delightful, very fun. I love, she loves being a part of the downtown and working with other businesses to help Myersburg grow. She's a Sinclair graduate and started her own design business, Ivy Designs, after graduation. She has enjoyed helping others in residential design, has participated in six-area show houses, and was a member of the Dayton Society of Interior Designers. She folded Ivy Designs into M. &amp; Company, and now offers design consulting only. Her parents were doers and loved to garden, so cook, bake, build, and repair, and maintained everything they owned. They passed that passion along to Molly, and she enjoys learning to create things, and the knowledge of how things are made are important. She strongly feels that we need to get back to teaching people to do things, create, repair, maintain, design, and invent. It is all very important in the society as a whole and as personal self-fulfillment. It is very satisfying to say, "I did that, I made that, I fixed that." So in regard to our NVCTC District Newsletter, Molly was impressed with the opportunities being provided, and she's hoping she can be a positive part of the Board. Joe Isaacovich was an amazing man, and she is honored to try to follow in his footsteps. So we welcome Molly and excited to have her.
And then, when you come into the meeting next time, you're going to be sitting right up here in the front.
We call that the kid table. You get to sit at the kid table.
Just the only kid here tonight.
Mark, where'd you get that gray hair at? You're not old enough for that. He was one of my students.
He'll have some stories for us, I'm sure.
Thanks, Molly.
It's all good, right, Mark?
I think Joe would be honored, privileged, that you were going to sit in that seat. I think you're going to do a remarkable job. You know, I've seen you through the years of what you have accomplished in things. So I'm grateful that you're taking that spot, and I wish you the best. And if you need anything, you can reach out to any of us. I'm sure everybody that's sitting up here would say the same thing. But thank you, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Nick will be happy to do that. So Dr. Wildy, it's wonderful. I told her to wear tennis shoes because it's such a big, our eighth graders attended today. So, well, they've been touring all week.
We need to approve this, okay? I have a motion?
Yeah, I move to appoint Molly Williams as a representative to the NVCTC Board of Education, effective immediately.
Can I have a second, please?
My second.
Okay, so we have a first from Mrs. Neese, second from Mrs. Geter. Roll call, please.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mrs. Geter?
Yes.
Mr. Anzler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Molly.
You have big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you're going to do a fabulous job of trying to do it. You know, he was the president and all that, too, so a couple of years from now, we'd love for you to be there. All right, representing Myersburg. Thank you for wanting to do that for the kids, because I know you're doing it for the children, so thank you. Okay, item, or I'm sorry, section 10 is organizational meeting information.
So as we finish out the year next month, we need to start gearing up for 2024. And prior to January 15th, we must have an organizational meeting to set our meeting dates for 2024, elect our officers. So our normal board meeting typically doesn't occur until the third Thursday of the month. So we have to have it prior to January 15th, and we also have to have Mayor Collins available to do the swearing-in of our new board members, so that we're just elected and the term that Nyla will be elected for. So Michelle Collins has said that she's available the 8th, 9th, or the 11th. So we were just checking with the Board to make sure you have that availability, and we'll set that meeting. And that meeting usually takes place at our office.
I'm not available for the 8th.
What does somebody else look like for the 9th or the 11th?
Either one probably is fine with me.
Yeah, me too. Me too. Since we usually meet on a Thursday, would the 11th be better for people?
I think so.
11th is good for me.
That works. So we will set it as the 11th, and we'll let Mayor Collins know that we can do that. Thank you.
Time?
I thought we usually did it a little bit earlier, right, like 5:00 or 5:30, because it's a pretty quick meeting. So what's the best time for everyone?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock. Okay.
Okay. We do not need to vote on that?
Nope.
Okay, next we'll go to reports. Do we need to make an appointment for the pro tem?
Yes, we do.
Pro tem, I would probably say it should go to Anne. She's vice president, so that would be Anne Neese.
All right, we've got that as well. Thank you very much.
Now we'll move on to section 11, Reports. Legislative Liaison, Mr. Corey Daffler.
Like I said earlier, there's not a ton of stuff going on in legislation right now. I do not have a report.
Thank you. Student Achievement Liaison, Mr. Anzler.
Again, our Student of the Month for October was Kay Masternardi from the Myersburg Middle School. But other Students of the Month, representing other schools in our district, was Baller Elementary School, Logan Myers, Bayer Elementary School, Chase Faute, Jane Chance Elementary School, Aubrey Norfleet, Kinder Elementary School, Micah Crutcher, Mark Twain Elementary School, Luca Hoagland.
Mark Twain Elementary School, Luca Hoagland, Medler Elementary School, Avery Daffler. Do you know that one?
I don't.
Mount Elementary School, Aaron Raybold, and Miamisburg High School, Cameron McGrew. So, congratulations to all of our students of the month. Well-deserved and honored.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to keep going?
Sure, go ahead.
The latest Making a Difference honoree is Bauer Elementary School paraprofessional, Sarah Williams. Sarah was nominated by Erin Safron for going above and beyond with the students at Bauer. Four Miamisburg High School athletes will continue their careers at the college level after signing their National Letters of Intent. Congratulations to Alyssa Greiner, Cedarville University, for soccer. Lauren Zanatili, University of Toledo, cross-country and track. Ally Turner, Ohio University, for golf. And Ethan Reedy, Ohio Northern University, for soccer. So, congratulations to those four individuals. Senior Lauren Zanatili earned First Team All-Ohio Award for her seventh-place finish in the OHSAA Cross-Country State Championship on Saturday, November 4th. Lauren's time broke her own school record that she set the previous week at the regionals. Her seventh-place finish is also the highest ever for a Miamisburg girls' cross-country athlete at the state championships. Senior Noah Engel and Junior Kasam Kahil also competed at the OHSAA Cross-Country State Championships. Kasim finished in 18th place at the time of 15 minutes and 45 seconds to secure a First Team All-Ohio Award and a podium finish. Noah finished 120th with a time of 16 minutes and 54 seconds. Kasim ends his junior year with a huge improvement over a year ago in a school-record time of 15:17, set last week at the regional championships. Noah ends his cross-country career at Miamisburg as a two-time state championship qualifier in the seventh-fastest time ever for Miamisburg with a 16:03 he ran at the regional championships. So, congratulations to those individuals.
In order to facilitate our speakers, we're going to move right on along down to... If it's okay with everybody, could we bump the comments now? How our speaker go now, I mean?
Sure. Yeah, we can amend that.
Yep, okay. Because they need to leave. Shelby. Please give your name and address, please.
Yes, I am Shelby Nunery, and I live on Deckard Court, Miamisburg. So, my name is Shelby, and I've called Miamisburg home for about 12 years now. I'm also an educator in a neighboring district, a teacher at a high school, and I'm a grad student right now studying educational administration, so I actually really appreciate your presentation. It was very interesting, actually. I'll probably use your data for one of my papers this weekend, actually. I took notes and everything. My kids are fifth-generation Miamisburgians. Is that how you say Miami's Burgery, Burgites? I don't know. Miamisburgians. I have a fifth grader, a second grader, and a preschooler. I have a deep love for Miamisburg School District because I have seen all the wonderful things happening through my children's education. I'm also the chapter chair for the nonpartisan national organization called Defense of Democracy, and I wanted to introduce that organization to all of you. We advocate for legislators, educators, and administrators who will work to maintain communities, as well as a public education system that supports and enhances our shared experiences, regardless of religious beliefs, cultural background, gender identity, or sexual orientation. Board members and members of the community can find out more and get involved at defendofdemocracy.org. I'm here today to express my gratitude to the Board, particularly the decision to fund a program that focuses on equity, inclusion, and diversity. This plan also aligns well with the social-emotional learning of which I am an advocate and supporter of. As a mom to an autistic and ADHD child, the lessons my son and his classmates learn has greatly benefited their classroom culture. He comes home and talks about it all the time, and I love that for him. Studies have shown that when children feel loved and valued for who they are, and when they feel that their perspectives and feelings are respected, they tend to behave and perform better. When adults individually, or as members of groups or organizations, publicly declare that certain communities or aspects of history are unworthy to learn about, or even sinful, the students who identify as members of those communities feel less than insecure, and they shrink instead of flourish. I am also proud to see the Board recently approve the Student-Led Black Student Union. I watched that board meeting, and it was very exciting to see that. Words such as defender, or advocate, or ally are used to describe someone who stands up to bullies. As a parent with many years to go in this district, I hope that the Board continues to embody these qualities, rather than the opposite, as we approach welcoming new people to the Board in January. As I conclude, I want to acknowledge that although no public school system is perfect, as a parent in the district, I know that if I ever have concerns, I have been able to easily communicate with my kids, teachers, and administrators in a mutually respectful way. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. I have nothing but respect for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sandy Coe.
Good evening. My name... Excuse my voice, I'm back working full-time, and I got a call from someone. My name is Sandy Coe, 1921 Cudgel Drive, Miamisburg, Ohio. I've lived in Miamisburg. I'm going to have to put this up here, my eyes, even with reading glasses. Miamisburg City Schools, a great place to send your children and grandchildren to school. I truly believe that. It's a great place to work, as I found out after retiring for 12 years and returning as a full-time intervention specialist on October 23rd. Thank you, Steve Homan, for having the confidence in me to hire me. I appreciate that. My children, Nicholas and Megan, graduated in 1999 and 2000. I have a fourth-grade granddaughter, Savannah, at Mark Twain, and a second-grade autistic grandson, Memphis, at JCE. He was... He attended Maddox Lang Preschool, and I've said this for years, and I will always say this, it is the best-kept secret in Miamisburg. Granted, my grandchildren did not have to pay to attend Maddox Lang. Savannah went because of a speech and was there for two years. Memphis went because of his autism, and he was there for three years. The 2023-2024 school year will bring change. I'm not being negative, I promise you. Change is hard for people. Change was hard for me, coming back after being retired, but I'm enjoying myself. It's not a popular concept with most people, but it needs to happen for our society to keep moving on. One of the things I think that we need to do and keep doing throughout this process of the change that's going to occur is communicate. We need to be open to our students, we need to be open to our employees, we need to be open to our community. We just need to communicate with them and let them know what's going on. I know that a lot of people don't take advantage of the ways that they can find out about what's going on, but we, as a district, I feel need to...
30 seconds.
...keep telling people what's going on. Why are we doing it? When are we doing it? How's it being done? Just keep those lines of communication open, and I think it will truly help this change process that we're going through. I had a conversation with my 10-year-old granddaughter, who marches to the beat of a different drummer, but I love her dearly. She's a fourth grader at Mark Twain. She was one of those who went to kindergarten through March of her year, first year, had a fantastic first-grade teacher, Jody Lanis, who delivered packets every Sunday night of what was going... Oh, shoot.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Savannah said, though, she likes being able... The best thing about going to Kinder, she gets to meet her pen pal, who she's been writing to all year. She gets to go to school with some of her classmates, and she was concerned that her little brother wouldn't still be going to Jane Chance with his great program there, and she's glad that Memphis gets to go there. Out of the mouth of babes, just communicate. Thank you, Steve.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Sandy.
Okay. Go to staff comments.
Board comments, I think he meant. Board comments, right?
I just want to thank everybody for their hard work. Congratulations to all the fall sports, and moving on to winter sports. Hope everybody has a good Thanksgiving, and that's all I got.
I would like to congratulate our band, recently performed in Indianapolis and did quite very well. I know that I can hear them from my house on a number of occasions in the summer, late at night. They do a phenomenal job. They represented as well, and I just wanted to say congratulations to them. Found out today, Lance Schneider was given the Southwest Division One Coach of the Year. We had a good season, so I wanted to say congratulations to him. I also wanted to congratulate Ms. Nyla and Jason Mallory on their recent election. Looking forward to working with them over the next... Well, I have two years left, so... But congratulations to them. Our next meeting is when?
December 21st.
December 14th.
Oh, 14th, sorry.
Yes. Yes, we moved it. We will be on winter vacation on December 21st.
The only reason I ask that is I want to take this opportunity. I will not be here December 14th. I will be paying in a PGA golf thing in Phoenix, so I wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank Dale Tobine. I'm sitting here because of Mayor Church, Mike McCabe, Dave Wood, Tom Nicholas, and I've been here for 10 years, which makes me senior in January. Through your leadership and guidance, when I first arrived here, you took me underneath your wing, showed me the ropes. I want to say how much I appreciate that. I know your passion has always been kids, always will be kids. I just hope that over the years, as you look at our meetings, that we continue to do that same sort of guidance that you have shown to me, that we continue to do that. So, I wish you nothing but the best in your endeavors. You've been here 16 years, and you've served the community, the school district, our students, our teachers, our staff, very well, and I just wanted to personally thank you from the bottom of my heart that I think you've done a remarkable job, Dale. Your legacy, as many others, will be remembered and honored, and I just think it's a blessing that I was able to serve with you. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Chris. I appreciate that a lot. And, you know, coming from a former student and athlete that I got to coach, and I'm going to work on the Board with you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
I just want to express my thoughts and prayers for those who are involved in the Tuscarawas Valley School District bus accident, and for those families who lost loved ones. I'd also like to express my congratulations to the MHS marching band. I'm a former band member from many years ago, but I still love the marching band, and I live right by the high school, and my husband and I enjoy hearing them practice. Hopefully, every night that it's nice out, we can sit out and just... We have our own personal concert. And also, congratulations to Coach Schneider. That is truly exciting that he was chosen.
I just ditto on the Miamisburg Band for being semifinalists in the Grand National Championship, and I wanted to thank Dan Shaw and Steve Homan for their presentation for the District Capital Improvement Plan, and I wanted to thank Mr. Blevins for all of his hard work on the five-year forecast. And then, of course, congratulations to Molly Williams. We're looking forward to having you give us a NBCTC report every month, so, yeah.
Just so you know, you do have a minimum of five minutes, and that's about 20 minutes less than Joe did. So, that's... Joe, you know it's true. I miss him already. The band is... Miamisburg has a history of having a phenomenal band, and just the accolades they certainly deserve, as Mr. Ambler pointed out. Probably the hardest-working bunch in the school district as far as athletes and everything else. They put out a lot, a lot, a lot of time, and, you know, kids, thank you for bringing the honor to our district that you have. It says a lot for your instructors and for you. There again, Coach Schneider, thank you. You listen to this at all? Of course, I'll call you personally and do that also. Nyla and Jason, congratulations. I hope that you enjoy your four and a half... Well, four years and the months that you put in. You know, thank you for being willing to come in and take over for Mr. Lewis, and so I'm glad... I'm very, very happy that you'll be continuing with us, with these guys. I'll stop in every now and then and smile at y'all, and then leave. Mr. Blevins, just so you know, you have me to thank for pushing you and pushing you, and I'm going to continue to do it for one more month, but you're... I'm behind you. Molly, thank you once again for willing to step up and... Because people don't understand how much time and effort that it takes to do what you're going to be doing, and being the type of person that you are, I know you're going to do an excellent job. So, thank you, thank you, okay? Thank you. For the kids, thank you. I'm done.
Welcome, Molly, and congratulations, Nyla and Mr. Mallory, and congratulations to the band. And that's it.
Ditto to what all of you have already stated. Welcome, Molly. Congratulations, Nyla and Mr. Mallory. We'll have some changes. You know, Dale's last meeting is next month. I want to take this time to officially announce his reception that we're going to be having at 5:00 on December 14th before the board meeting, so anyone who would like to invite. We'll have a little cookie and punch reception out in the atrium and wish Dale well, and we'll start at 5:00.
I don't die from old age.
Oh, I think you'll be okay. I think you'll be okay. I know. So, we're looking forward to that. So, we'll be... More information to come. I'll be definitely sharing that out on all of our social media and communications.
I'll be definitely sharing that out on all of our social media and communications.
I like chocolate.
So, we can have a...
I like chocolate a lot.
Okay, I can, I can do that. And then, I also spoke to Mr. Osborne, and Coach Schneider was named co-coach, co-coach of the year. I think Harvey Crouch from Hamilton High School was also sharing that honor, so congratulations to both of them for that accomplishment. And I don't think I've ever done this at a board meeting, but I'm announcing a calamity day, because we have an unusual condition coming up with our solar system on April the 8th, and so the path of Miami'sburg, Dayton, a little north of here, is in the total eclipse path. So, if you have friends and family that think they're gonna come visit, there's no hotels available within the 60-mile corridor along I-75 where the total eclipse is scheduled to take place at the opportune time of 3:00 PM. So, we have dismissal at our middle school at that time, there are special glasses that everyone is supposed to wear, I'm not sure how bus drivers are going to navigate in total darkness. I mean, in normal time, they would, but with the eclipse and safety concerns and students boarding buses, getting off buses, and then also the influx of friends and tourists that might be coming to Miami'sburg that day to see the eclipse. We definitely don't want to complicate things, and this'll be a great opportunity for students to plan ahead. It is the Monday after spring break, so it'll extend everyone's spring break by day. We have the official approved glasses that we're still gonna be able to share with all of our students and staff, and anyone who is on our campus that day, for whatever reason, they will have safety glasses. And I think that some of our businesses are planning for some fun events, so I know Molly and the MMA have started talking about ways to bring folks to our community that day, so there might even be shirts that say, "I saw the eclipse in Miami'sburg, Ohio." You never know. So, you can share that with your friends. I will be sharing it out with our students and our staff later this evening or tomorrow. So, that's the first, sharing a calamity day at the board meeting. The Department of Education and workforce do really feel, and have had discussions with them, that this definitely does qualify as a calamity day because of all, especially all of us within that path of total darkness, or total totality, I think is the correct scientific term. And then, a few other things I'd like to mention, of course, keeping all of our, all of the families in Licking County and any of those other folks that maybe weren't school-related that lost their lives or are injured that day, such a tragedy. And as Sandy mentioned, we are still, we did make the decision to move ahead with elementary programming, but we had a very long meeting last night, right? It was about 6 o'clock, and we wrapped up. We had a great committee of our enrollment studies, so we've kind of, it's now the enrollment programming committee. So, we had, we started the staff intention, so all of our teachers and staff have received their letter of intent, so they can start letting us know where they'd like to be next year as we make a lot of changes. Someone asked me how many of our students and staff would this impact, and it's pretty much everybody. At least half of each school is going to experience a change, whether you're a teacher or a student, in most cases. So, we have started to develop a timeline, so we're gonna, we shared an FAQ, I think, about a week to 10 days ago, and there will be several of those. We're planning a December meeting where we can outline some transition activities for students to come and visit, like field trips during the day, and also some parent evenings and student evenings to just get to know the school and the principals and get to know each other. So, those are some things we're planning, so be on the lookout for that. As we, we're also planning to merge, have a meeting with all of the PTOs, also with our student councils, because we want students to be a part of our planning as we move forward. So, be on the lookout for all of those things, as we are gonna have one more meeting before the end of December, and hopefully to have a timeline to share out by then. So, lots of work ahead, but it's exciting, so... And I think that's all of the items I had on my list. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yeah, me too. Did you have anything for us?
I'm good, thank you.
We're good?
Thanks for asking.
Okay. Next, we'll move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official precisely to conduct the annual evaluation of our treasurer, Mr. Blevins. Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
I move we enter into an executive session at 19:55.
Second. Go ahead. Nyla.
Nyla?
Yes. It was her, she said second, yeah.
Did you say it? I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't hear ya.
It's okay.
So, we have first, Mr. Ambler, and second, Ms. Gettr. We are officially...
Yeah, that's two.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes.
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 Thanks, Shelby.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thanks.